On eighteen, oh, it was on, I wasn't talking into it. I call to order the Monday, April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Verona Common Council. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unironed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the clerk read the role.
Alder Person Cronin. Alder Person Doyle.
Here.
Alder Person Gaskell.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
Fantastic. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? All right, I'm gonna guess that's a no. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, Common Council meeting and the April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen organizational meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, or motions? Alder Ricky?
I just noticed in the minutes from the organizational meeting, I am still listed under the Public Safety and Welfare Committee, and so that needs to be corrected.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? Alder Doyle?
I'll make a motion to approve the March nineteenth and seventeenth meeting minutes with the aforementioned changes.
Motion by Alder Doyle to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Second by Alder Touche. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Okay, on to item six, Mayor's business. First, we will start out with the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed in Nebraska in eighteen seventy-two by the planting of more than one million trees throughout the state, and whereas Arbor Day is now annually observed throughout the United States, and whereas the city of Verona celebrates our twenty-third consecutive year of being named Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, beautify our community, and protect our environment, now therefore I, Luke Diaz, Mayor of the city of Verona, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, as Arbor Day in the city of Verona, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees in order to ensure the beauty and the value of our community for generations to come. And, and just as a side note, if anyone wants to discuss tree planting with me, I'd be happy to do it. Next, we will have Citizen Committee appointments, and I have been informed that I should read these into the record, so I'm going to do so. For Cemetery Board, we have Alder Evan Touche as Chair of Public Works Sewer and Water Committee, Brian Lammers as Finance Director, David Walker as Parks Director being appointed to it. For the City-Town Joint Planning Committee, I am appointing Steve Hynson for the Community Development Authority. Adam Frey, it says unconfirmed in your packet, he confirmed with me this morning, so he's being appointed. For Fitchron EMS, Greg Miller. The Library Board, Citizen Appointments don't run out till July one, so they'll be made at a later date. For the Parks Recreation and Forestry Committee, Mike Baer, although I would like to point out in the packet, it says a three-year term, but my understanding is it's a one-year term. And then, of course, he's on Plan Commission as the Parks Chair. For Tourism Commission, I'm appointing Charles Egan, Jason Hunt, Haley Jones, and Carl Curtis. For the Verona Economic Development Commission, Craig Coleman is the Chamber Appointment, and Sean Cleary of Cleary Building Corp. is the Business Corporation, or the Business Appointment, which is made by the Mayor in consultation with the Chamber. And finally, I'm appointing Roger Remus to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And of course, these need to be approved by the City Council, so questions, comments, or potential motions? Alder Doyle?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Citizen Committee Assignment Recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion passes. Next, we will move on to announcements. Does anyone have any announcements they'd like to make? Alder Gaskell?
I just wanna talk about a couple things that are happening on May fifth. We have the Word on the Street 5K, which is our fundraiser for the library, eight o'clock in the morning, it's a 5K run and walk. And then, there's a couple other things that the Chamber is sponsoring, and one of those is a Cinco de Mayo celebration. If we get approval tonight at council, it'll be over here in Festival Park, eleven to four. It's a family-focused event and should be really fun.
Excellent. Any other announcements?
I just would like to give permission, please, to confirm and send in our parade registration for the Hometown Days Parade. For the new members, the council normally rides the antique fire truck in the parade and hands out candy, kinda fun. So, if I have your permission, I'll go ahead and send in that registration. That's on Sunday, July third, and the parade route starts, or the lineups in the staging area starts at ten thirty in the morning.
Great. Alder Ricky?
I just wanted to announce that if you wanna see a good performance, the Verona Area Community Theater is offering hairspray this weekend, seven thirty PM Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, and two PM on Saturday.
Great. Any other announcements? Okay, moving on, we will have the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Last month, Alliant Energy presented their plant power outages for the city of Verona. At, at the dais, I provided everyone a map of the April twenty-third power outage, plant power outages. That's an area north of Verona Avenue, west of Main Street, including Maine, in the North Schuman area, and south Verona Avenue, east of Main Street, including Main Street, the South Jefferson area. Again, every time we, we get an update from Alliant Energy, we wanna provide the information, just to make sure that people go on the webpage, Alliant Energy webpage, under their account, make sure their contact information is accurate, 'cause that's how they'll be contacting people for these plant power outages. We will be providing council an opportunity to get council business cards, if that's something that you, you want. We'll be, we'll be providing a draft of the, the cards, and if you, if you do want them, let us know. If not, then just tell us that, that you're not interested in, in getting those. They'll have your district and your address and phone number on there. Also, we'll be looking at possibly name badges. There's interest from, from council that provide council members name badges, when they go to an event, they have something that they can put on with their, with their name. Wanted to make sure, is that something that council is interested in pursuing? August ninth, twenty eighteen, is the next deadline for the League of American Bicycle Application for Bicycle Friendly Communities. With the amount of work that we've been doing in Verona, both bike lanes and now construction on M, and the, the plan that we presented in twenty sixteen, I think it's worthwhile. We apply for the recognition for Verona, and if council's in agreement, I'll move forward and pursue that, hopefully be able to get that done by the, the deadline. If not, there is a spring deadline after that. Any objection to that?
No, I'd be happy to help, though, if there are some things you can do to supplement your application.
Great, thank you. Upcoming meetings, the Dane County City and Villages Association Annual Meeting is coming up, May second. I've provided some information to council. If council is interested in, in attending, please contact me. We'll be sending registration in the twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth, when we, when we get the information. We will send it in as a citywide registration, so that you don't have to register and pay upfront the registration cost. Council's Board of Review Meeting will be May twenty-first at seven o'clock. To prepare council for, council members for the Board of Review Meeting, the city clerk has three sets of training material. If you're interested in taking the, the training course, it's a roughly two-hour self-guided course. It provides information on what the, what your role is as a Board of Review. The state recommends one person from the council taking the, the training course each year, so with the number of new council members, we do have three sets available, and they can be used multiple times, so please see Ellen if you wanna take that course. This morning, city of Verona representatives met with representatives of school district, town of Verona, city of Fitchburg, at our quarterly IDAC meeting. Just wanted to give you a few bullet points on some of the information. The school district will be looking at utilizing the new Act one forty-two for safety funds. The city council approved a school resource officer agreement. We're waiting on the, the school board to, to pass that. That, we brought that up, and that should be going to the school board shortly. Town of Verona had thirteen new single-family home permits. The city of Fitchburg had, I'm sorry, single-family homes since April twenty seventeen. Fitchburg had roughly fifty-one single-family home permits from the beginning of the year. We included a lot of information on the different developments, provided updates to, to the different agent jurisdictions, on the city of Verona information, and developments, both commercial and residential. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city administrator? Okay, next, we have the Engineers' Report. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a quick update, the contractors pushing along on the downtown streets reconstruction, the water main is done, and the laterals are being worked on, sanitary sewer work has been started. We will be, AECOM will be staking storm sewer probably late this week, early the following week, in hopes of pushing that utility through by mid, no, no later than mid-May, and then from there will be subgrade and concrete work. Parking lot reconstruction, stage one for the library has been done, the removals have been done, and the aggregate put back into place, the storm sewer at the old library, and the pavement removal is done, and they're working on getting that all in, in shape and ready for pavement as well. And April seventeenth, AECOM, along with the city, conducted four-bid openings for the Well Six Bike Ped, traffic signals at County M in Liberty, and the East Verona Pavement Rehab, and recommendation letters have been sent, and you'll see those later in the package tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for the engineer? Okay, next up, we have committee reports. We will start with Alder Doyle and the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Agenda item ten A one, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the bills in the amount of seven hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion by Alder Doyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp.
By way of explanation, some of the larger expenditures were for Madrell Excavating LLC, two hundred and eighteen thousand dol-, uh, two hundred and eighteen, nine hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, and that was for downtown streets and the parking lots at the old library, newer library, and the senior center, and also the Madison Metro Sewage District for two hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Great. Does anyone have any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion to pay the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And that motion passes. Alder Doyle?
Agenda item ten A two, the committee made a motion to recommend to the city council an amendment to the city administrative policy, number twenty-seven, regarding financial management.
Could you elaborate a little bit, or?
I was gonna ask, wait for a second before I continue discussion.
Hey, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded?
Okay, to further elaborate on the policy, this was something that we mentioned at the last meeting. The amendment will update Section Five Fund Balance portion of the policy. It will reduce the unassigned fund balance of certain funds by the calculated liability for vested sick pay prior to determining the percentage of fund balance available for working capital. So, it's now states that the city shall maintain a minimum of twenty-five percent of budgeted operating expenditures and strive to maintain thirty-five percent. Should a budget proposal utilize a portion of the working capital within the target goal above twenty-five percent of budgeted operating expenditures, the reasoning for the usage shall be, shall be included in the budget document. So, and again, this was something that came up during the last budget process, that our finance director brought to our attention, that this would just more accurately portray the city's liabilities.
Makes a lot of sense. Does anyone have any questions or comments or thoughts on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And that motion passes. Anything further?
No further business from finance.
Great. Next up, we will have item ten B, the Joint City-Town Planning Committee, and I will turn it over to City Planner, Adam Sayers.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number R dash eighteen dash zero one four, approving extraterritorial certified survey map creating two lots at six five five five, County Highway M in the town of Verona. The proposed certified survey map, CSM, will create two lots at six five five five, County Highway M. Lot one of the CSM will contain the existing house, lot two will contain a future single-family house. The proposed land division is located in the town of Verona. It is located within the neighborhood, town neighborhood area of our boundary agreement with, with the township. All CSMs within the neighborhood, the town neighborhood area go to what's called the Joint City-Town Planning Committee, and this was reviewed by the Joint City-Town Planning Committee on November twenty-eighth of two thousand and seventeen, as required by the boundary agreement, and the committee voted five to zero to recommend for the approval of the CSM. This is the last step in the process of the CSM. It has already been approved by the, the town board, the town planning commission, and also Dane County. The final step of approvals by statute is the city needs to sign off on the CSM before it can be recorded. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or potential motions? Alder Gaskell?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number R dash one eight dash zero one four, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map creating two lots at six five five five, County Highway M in the town of Verona.
Seconded by Alder Ricky. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And that motion passes. Next, we will move on to item ten C, Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission, and for that, I will turn it over to Alder Ricky.
Thank you. Item number ten C one, I will make a motion to approve a resolution R dash eighteen dash zero one five, authorizing an application for Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources stewardship grant.
Motion in favor of Resolution R dash eighteen dash zero one five. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Doyle.
So, the Parks and Recreation Committee and Common Council approved the modified master plan for Fireman's Park on March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Improvements to Fireman's Park outdoor recreation areas and the acquisition of additional land for the park are included in this master plan. An application for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources stewardship grant would possibly provide financial assistance for the Fireman's Park master plan implementation. This resolution allows for the application to be submitted.
You have heard the explanation. Any further comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to ten D, which is Public Safety and Welfare. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. I move approval for a premises description amendment for the combination Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license for Four Sisters Tapas Restaurant, nine fifty-eight Liberty Drive, Suite one oh six, to add an outdoor patio.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Alder Ricky?
So, the Four Sisters Tapas Restaurant is requesting a premises description amendment to allow them to serve alcohol on their patio. The proper amendment request paperwork has been filed. On February thirteenth, the Common Council approved a conditional use permit for this property with the following contingencies, and these contingencies are still in place. The use of the outdoor seating area is permitted to operate from seven AM to ten PM, seven days a week. Number two, outdoor patio fencing shall be a minimum of forty-eight inches tall, and we had confirmation that they're gonna use the same fencing as their neighbors, so visually it'll all be the same. Number three, the outdoor patio fencing materials should be approved by the Director of Planning and Development. Number four, the exit for the patio shall be labeled as exit only. And number five, the fence and gate for the outdoor patio shall comply with the requirements from the Police Department and Building Inspector.
Thank you. And my understanding is those contingencies are part of the motion?
Yes.
Alder Ricky was at yours as well? Fantastic. Anything further on that motion? Okay, you've heard the explanation. Any other comments by the council?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
So, I noticed in some of the supplemental materials that it indicated that the number of parking spots is actually a little bit less for Four Sisters.
Is your microphone on?
Okay. So, I noticed in the supplemental materials that some of the parking spots for Four Sisters, the number is actually less than what is typically approved for outdoor patios. I was just curious as to how many fewer.
Mr. Sayer, is that a question you can answer?
Sure. Which, which page from the supplemental materials? Is it from the staff report? On page for the conditional use permit, and it says on top, it says, "Conditional Use Permit for Sisters Restaurant"? Yeah, so there's a table in there talking about, about the, when we looked at this, when we approved it back in two thousand and seventeen, we looked at the parking in the site, and these multi-tenant buildings can be somewhat complicated when calculating parking, so currently, we knew that, at the time, we knew the uses of the Verona Woods being there, and also Four Sisters coming in as well. So, they have provided a hundred and forty-six. The range on site is approximately one hundred twelve to one hundred and sixty-eight of what's required by code. So, from, from a code standpoint, it, it, it does meet the requirements. Parking on that site, though, is kinda loaded to the west, and it's shared with, with the woods, so typically, it'd be more balanced in many type of develop, developments, but since they're sharing it with the woods, it, it does work strictly from a number standpoint. I'm sure on a busy night, that may be challenging on the eastern side of the building to find parking, but overall, the number, the number does, does work from a use standpoint.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the motion? With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell?
Yes, thank you. Item ten D two, I'd like to move approval for a special event permit application from Lee Jordan, Verona Area Chamber of Commerce, for the Dane Bi Local Cinco de Mayo Event on Saturday, May fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at Festival Park, one eleven Lincoln Street, from eleven AM to four PM.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole?
This is what I was mentioning before in the announcements. This is the first year for this event. The event includes children's activities, I believe, seven food trucks, live music, some Mexican dancing displays, and a beer tent where beer and margarita-flavored malt beverages will be served. And Lee is here, if anyone has any questions of Lee.
Great. You've heard the motion. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And that motion passes. And I am looking forward to that event. Alder Gaskell?
Item ten D three, related to ten D two, this is a move approval for an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license from the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce for the Cinco de Mayo Event on Saturday, May fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at Festival Park, one eleven Lincoln Street, from eleven to four. Lee Jordan, agent.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Alder Kemp?
This is just giving the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce the temporary Class B license in order that they be able to serve alcohol at this event. A licensed bartender will be in the tent at all times that alcohol is being served. Anyone entering the festival who is twenty-one or over will automatically receive a wristband.
Thank you. You've heard the motion? Any questions or comments?
I just wanna add, it's the permit to sell himself, so it's serve and sell.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. And that motion passes. Anything further?
No.
With that, we will move on to Alder Touche with Public Works Sewer and Water Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item ten E one, I make an a motion to recommend approval for a developer agreement for Cathedral Point, Phase Eight.
Motion to approve the developers' agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Gaskell?
Our city staff and attorney have worked with the developer for Cathedral Point, Phase Eight, in preparation of developer agreement. Phase Eight includes thirty-two lots. The agreement anticipates that construction of the public improvements to serve the phase will start in early May, and will be substantially completed in September of this year, pending permit approvals. At that point, we will start seeing homes being built on that site.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments, thoughts on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And that motion passes.
All right, next up, item ten E two, I make an a motion to award a construction contract for project ID two thousand and seventeen dash one one five, well number six, not to exceed two million, six hundred and four thousand, one hundred, two dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Alder Kemp?
Public Works received five sealed bids on this project. The high bid was three million, five hundred ninety-five, approximately three million, five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. The low bid is in the motion, at two million, six hundred and four thousand dollars. Madrell Excavating is currently, has been awarded, or we would like to award the contract to for the, for this project. They had done the downtown streets reconstruction and library parking lot for us in the city. AECOM did some background checks with them and recommends to the city that we award the contract to them.
Great. You've heard the explanation? Any questions, comments?
No, we, we, at the committee level, we discussed the discrepancies between the two, really kinda questioned why there was such a large gap, and really came to understand that it was more about scheduling with these contractors and what was appropriate for them. In addition, Portez, which was the high bidder, is from Iowa, and we believe that they were just kind of throwing a bid out there to see if they can get a high bid in there.
Fascinating. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And that motion passes.
Next up, I make an emo-, uh, item ten E three, I make an a motion to approve a professional services agreement for the, for construction administration under project tent two zero one five dash one one five, well number six.
Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin?
This consulting services agreement with AECOM is for construction, staking, contract administration, product review, and shop drawing review for design services during construction. This contract will also include the wellhead protection plan. The utility and building construction inspection will be performed by our city staff. I forgot to make this part of my motion. It is not to exceed one hundred thirty thousand dollars. It is not to exceed $130,150.
We will include that in the motion. Is that okay with the second? Okay.
Yeah, so AECom is going to be doing a lot of the administrative work for us. We are hoping that this project will be completed by October 2019.
Thank you. So, any further comments, questions, thoughts on the motion? And Alder Touche, if you could just reread the motion with the not to exceed amount.
The motion is to approve a professional services agreement for construction administration under project ID 2017-115, well number six, not to exceed $130,150.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes.
Next up, 10E4, I make an a motion to award a construction contract for project ID 2018-107, County Highway M/1000 Oaks/Liberty Drive Traffic Signals, not to exceed, next page,
Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Gaskell.
On this project, we got two sealed bids. The high bid was for 590, approximately $595,000. The low bid was for 570, approximately $576,000, with integrity grading excavating of Schofield, Wisconsin. The well within our contingencies, or our contingencies were $457,000, so this is more than we were originally expecting. Integrity grading and excavating is currently working on our County Highway M construction and Verona Road under Wisconsin Department of Transportation oversight. AECom recommends that the city of Verona accept this bid and get the traffic work done. This project is funded by Tax Increment District 6 and will not impact our general fund.
Thank you. You've heard the explanations. Questions, comments on the motion?
Did scheduling, oh, sorry, did scheduling play a factor into this coming, and I think it was what, 26% above estimates, or were there other factors determined to be a play?
I want to let Mr. Darren Jacobson speak on that one.
Darren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't think schedule had an influence on this one. I think it was more specific bid items, more and less regarding the hot mix asphalt, the asphalt, and then crushed aggregate base course, the gravel that goes underneath. The prices we're seeing now are higher than what we saw in January even. And not only that, you have a complex work zone. I think that took into account, you're talking about 20,000 cars a day that travel through here, the road will not be shut down, the road will be live, so that always adds a complex factor, risk associated when you're talking about safety and efficiency, workmanship. It's a lot different than working on a closed road. So, I think those were parts of it. The spread between the two bids was only $20,000, so, and that goes to show you the estimate. We should have just been fine tuned a little bit more for certain site conditions, but market drives things to prices, so those are sometimes unforeseeable changes that we can't predict. Yep.
Anything further? Any other questions or comments on the motion? Alder Cronin?
I have a question, specific to this project, but also in general. Does the city of Verona, in their bid applications, give any priority to Verona and/or Dane County businesses as opposed to outside?
Darren?
I don't believe anything's written in our spec, but pretty much for all our traffic signal work, everything is maintained by the city of Madison, so we use the products that they use, which is TAPCO, and they're basically the primary and one of the only suppliers for traffic signal equipment within the state. So, that's, those are the primary parts in here. Everything else is pretty much earth and materials.
Anything further? Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes.
Okay, next up, item 10E5, I make an a motion to approve a professional services agreement for construction administration under project ID 2018-107, County Highway M/1000 Oaks/Liberty Drive Traffic Signals, not to exceed $34,860.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Gaskell.
This agreement is for the project that we just talked about. AECom is, again, going to be doing the construction staking, contract administration, product review, shop drawing review, and other design services during construction. Just like the previous project before, this one, city staff will be doing the inspection. This project as well will, will, some things that came up during committee was the Ironman. This will impact Ironman for part of the event, for part of the construction. They will, am I correct on this, or am I, nope, wrong one?
The signals one, no.
Oh, the signals one, you're right.
Yep, you're still on the signals project.
Yep, I'm jumping ahead of myself, thank you. Take that back. We're good.
Okay. You've heard the explanation. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes.
Next up, 10E6, I make an a motion to award a construction contract for project 2017-113, County Highway M and Locust Drive Pedestrian Project, not to exceed $1,295,570.25.
Is there a second for the motion? Seconded by Alder Kemp.
This is the project that will be impacted by Ironman. This project, we had five sealed bids. The high bid was $1,400, approximately $1,480,000. The low bid was, as stated in the motion, was approximately $1,295,000 by Parise Construction. Parise Construction successfully completed multiple projects within the city, most recently the downtown streetscape 2 project, and the 2017 intersection improvements at all three of our intersections. AECom did a review and recommends approval to city council to accept the bid for this project.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. And that motion passes.
All right, next up, item 10E7, I make an a motion to approve a professional services agreement for construction administration under project ID 2017-113, County Highway M and Locust Drive Pedestrian Project, not to exceed $55,000.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Alder Cronin.
Like our last two projects, this is construction administrative, construction services agreement, very similar to the last ones, construction staking, contract administration, project, product review, shop drawing review, and again, city staff will be inspecting this project.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And that motion passes.
All right, last item, 10E8, I make an a motion to award a construction contract for project ID 2018-103, Concrete Rehabilitation.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp.
I would like to amend the motion to not to exceed $774,145.40.
That was the motion you made originally?
I just did not put the exceed amount in.
Gotcha, is that okay? Okay.
All right, and this one, we only received one sealed bid. The sole bid was from Parise Construction. We had, so, at approximately $774,000. With contingencies, we had estimated $546,000. Again, Parise Construction's done a lot of projects for us, AECom, Darren Jacobson, and...
There was no contingencies, Evan.
No contingencies? So, you do not want my motion to not to exceed?
No, the estimate was without contingencies.
Oh, estimate is without contingency, thank you very much. This item actually had quite a bit of discussion at committee level. It, the fact that there was only one sealed bid, this is a fairly complicated project. This takes, this will remove the concrete that is on the east end of Verona Avenue, all the way up to the intersection. It also involves changing how the lights work at that intersection, if any of you travel on Old PB, things can get pretty congested there, especially during the rush hours. Darren has, along with some of our engineers, have kind of worked out a scheme to allow traffic to move efficiently through this intersection. So, it, you know, I would, the fact that it's a complicated project is why we believe we only received one bid.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the motion? I have one. There's not a danger that the cost could go through the roof with no contingencies on this, directed towards Public Works Director?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We have contingencies built. I mean, the project was overestimated, like Mr. Touche said, through constructability complications, traffic management, unforeseen site conditions, that the plans that we have are specs that we've derived from in-house. We've used them on multiple projects. It's a good spec. It's just a complicated project that has a lot of moving pieces with it. And the other goal here is we're not shutting East Verona Avenue down, we're not shutting the intersection down, so you're talking about working in live traffic again. One lane will be shut down at a time, but that comes into play with contractor efficiency and such forth. The other advantage of doing this project at this time is Old PB will be closed south of the Park and Ride and north of Forest View for the replacement of the roadway bridges. So, certain movements, traffic volume will be decreased at this intersection throughout the summer. So, doing this project at a different time isn't going to change the ease of workmanship, it's actually going to make it more difficult, because you can, certain turn movements, we can, we can accommodate easier this year because they'll be non-existent or minimized. I can go into a lot more detail, but I don't, I don't think I need to. You guys know I'm a detailed person, so I'll just be quiet at this point if there's any other, any other questions.
No, thank you. Is any other questions? Alder Riki?
Can you, Mr. Jacobson, just reassure people that this will be worth it in the end?
Yeah, I mean, now's the time to do this project. Like I said, one, the pavement's in need of repair. Not only is it going to, it's called a rehab project, but there's multiple pieces to it. Yes, we're removing the concrete, fixing the asphalt, we're re-timing the signals out there, we're changing the phasing out there, so the north and south approaches are going to function more efficiently. There's additional streetlights that we're going to be putting out there. There's additional loop detection we're going to be putting out there for the signal, so it's, it's not just, as some people may envision, street rehab is just a replacing kind, but there is, there is improvements out here that will be made as part of the project also.
I want to add, there was an interesting statistic that you had brought up, Mr. Jacobson, the number of accidents that have happened.
Yeah, the police pulled the crash data from this intersection, and it's, what was identified as the intersection of note, and the police department can elaborate more on what that means. Basically, there's been 39 accidents here since 2012, whether they're severe or fender benders, that's the total count. This is one of the more problematic intersections that we do have in the city of Verona, and it's typically because of this north and south approach and the user friendliness for, you know, drivability through there gets complicated because the green movements and there's no left protected movement.
I'd like to add, on the northbound, on Old PB, you know, I've heard from many people a desire for a dedicated right turn lane, and it's not something we can add due to the wetlands, so, I mean...
This time.
As someone who uses that road and used to turn right there frequently, I know I've wanted it myself, but I've, I no longer travel that way, but I still hear it from others, so...
Just to elaborate on that, we did look at that to see if we could accommodate some widening up in there, but it, the corridor of the real estate that we have there is just too tight, so we're very limited on the expansion that we can do there, so ultimately, we had to make it more efficient.
Alder Gaskell?
We will also be gaining some non-motorized transportation improvements at that intersection as well, generally making it more comfortable for people who are trying to access the Park and Ride from the bus stop and/or walking and biking in that area in general.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, and just to be clear, this is a motion to award the construction contract for project 2018-103, the concrete rehabilitation, and it did not include the not to exceed contingency.
Your motion should just be the 774-145.40.
To be contingent on that amount, correct?
Yes, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I am clear, no. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Up next on the agenda, we have old business. However, I would like to ask for unanimous consent to do that at the end, so we can have the closed session at the very end before we boot everyone else out.
Can we consider moving new business before old business in the future, for future agendas, kind of like we did for announcements?
I like that idea.
It would require a change in the ordinance, like we did, with a change in the announcements.
I think that's fine. I just, I think it, order-wise, makes sense, especially for attendees, so they can stay for the good stuff and get out of here sooner.
Okay, well, I think we will look into that. Are there any objections to going past item 11 for the moment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item 12, new business. A, discussion and possible action regarding a development agreement for the Verona Area School District's new high school and related facilities construction project. Jeff?
Thank you. Verona, common council in the Verona Area School District approved the term sheet outlining the conditions for a contribution by the city toward the transportation costs for the new high school. Included is a draft development agreement based on conditions of the term sheet. School District has been provided the same draft for their May 7th, 2018 meeting. The agreement is in final form. There are a couple minor blanks, dates to fill in, a little information, and then additional, the exhibits are what we're finalizing. If council is, approves the development agreement in form, allowing city staff to complete the exhibits and get feedback from the school district, any substantial changes could be requested by, or could be done at the May 14th council meeting. And with that, if attorney would like to provide any information?
Sure. So, the agreement that's been provided to you and that was provided to the school district late last week, what we did is we took the term sheet that had been agreed to by the council and by the school board, and we merged it with what I would say is our standard residential subdivision agreement. And the reason we did that is because, you know, the term sheet that we have with the school district gets into certain public improvements that will be made and then ultimately dedicated to the city, and specifically, I'm talking about road improvements. I know there may be some other improvements also. And so, our standard residential subdivision agreement contains a lot of language that talks about, you know, the process for a developer to construct, install, complete public improvements, and then dedicate them to the city in the process that we go through for acceptance of the public improvements. And as Jeff said, there are a few blanks within the document, but I would, you know, these are, most of the blanks... but I would, you know, these are... Most of the blanks relate to having the school district identify the engineering firm that will be preparing the plans that are ultimately approved and by Theron and his departments. Those are most of the blanks within the document itself. Some other issues as they relate to construction. The... There are going to be... As drafted right now, there would be six exhibits to the agreement. And I'm just going to run through those because that's really the additional work that we need to do and then be able to get it to the school district. So, Exhibit A is the legal description of the property. That's something that we're hoping the school district can provide to us. They should have accumulated the legal descriptions as they've acquired these properties. You know, we do touch on the fact that we are going to acquire the Sugar Creek School property, and we were just going to attach the map that we had to the term sheet as an exhibit to this document. Last, Exhibit C is we are going to have an agreement with the Urbach Trust that relates back to the idea that the city would provide an additional $500,000 to the school district. I think it's by August 1 of 2020. And then, we're going to have an agreement with the Urbach Trust so that when they ultimately develop that land, we're going to get paid back that $500,000. We did have a very positive meeting with the representatives of the Urbach Trust last week. Jeff attended. I attended. Adam attended. Mr. Gurrell from the school district was there. And in concept, essentially what it's going to be, it's going to be a very short document, one page, possibly two, that would be recorded on the Urbach Trust land that would state, upon a triggering event, that $500,000 would be paid to the city. What the Urbach Trust requested at the meeting was that the triggering events not be related to the sale of the property. They had a concern that if it related to the sale of the property, that that could somehow negatively impact the sale. What they asked was either if we tie it to either site plan approval or the issuance of a building permit. And I think at a city staff level, we're okay working within those confines. We obviously want to see the property sold and developed because that's the way that we're going to get our money back. And we don't have any concern that anybody would be able to kind of do an end run around the city if it's tied to either site plan approval or building permit being issued because both of those things would clearly have to happen for any type of development on the property. And so, we included that as a paragraph and then as exhibit into the agreement. You know, it doesn't have to be in there, but I think it's just helpful to educate anybody who's reading the development agreement to know that this is a critical part of the term sheet that was negotiated between the parties and therefore should be included in the documents. The last three exhibits are the ones that we're really working on, more so Exhibits D and E. So, one of the things that we've talked about in open session at previous meetings is the fact that we want to make sure that everyone has a clear understanding of what's going to need to be done moving forward. And so, if you look at pages, page three and four of the development agreement, we grabbed some language from the term sheet that talked about the different road improvements that were going to need to be done. What we would like to do is have a little bit more detail in what would be Exhibit D, exactly describing what those improvements are going to be. So, everybody has eyes wide open when they execute this agreement as to what's going to need to be done. I think it's probably appropriate to have that here in your standard residential subdivision development agreements. You know, it's so... Everything is so standard that we wouldn't have that type of exhibit. We simply have language like we have on pages three and four of the agreement that says all plans are going to need to be approved by the city. And the developer in that case has done residential subdivisions before. They understand the improvements that need to be completed. Here, we thought it would be appropriate to provide a little bit more detail. So, that's one of the exhibits that we're working on. The other exhibit is the summary of the fees. So, if you were to go to pages eight and nine of the development agreement, that's where we have some blanks. And what we want to be able to do is identify estimated fees that the school district is going to have to pay. And then, we're also going to have an exhibit to the development agreement where we effectively show our math. And we do also... We do do that in our residential development agreement. So, that's consistent with what we've done. The last exhibit is the summary of uses, and this is something that we're working through with our Parks Department now. I think when the term sheet came back to the city from the school board, they had provided some additional information in exhibit to the term sheet that related to how the city uses the school district property and how the school district uses city property. And in light of the changes that they made, we felt that we might have some additional information that could be provided. So, again, those are the exhibits that we're working on. They're not... I don't think that they're going to result in substantive changes. I think it's just more clarification. They're going to work off of the information that we already have in the term sheet.
I have a question. What kind of action, if any, would be appropriate tonight?
Well, it's... So, one of the things that we're trying to do, and I know the school district is doing, we're working with their schedule. And my understanding, based on the term sheet that came back to the city last time, May 15 is a key date for them. And so, the next meeting for the council is May 14, the day before. And I think if you want to, you could move to approve this agreement tonight. I think if you're going to do that, you're going to want to give city staff some flexibility on preparation and completion of the exhibits and then the ability to make what I would call non-substantive changes based on the school district's comments. Another approach is to provide feedback to us tonight. You know, I think one of the... Whether you actually approve the development agreement tonight or not, I think there's a benefit for staff and also for the school district. If you all looking at this agreement say, hey, this looks good. We know that there are still a few i's that need to be dotted and t's to be crossed. But if you effectively, you know, are comfortable with the agreement, that at least sends a message to the school board that even though we may have to bring this back on the 14th, there's probably not going to be any major issues. And if there are any major issue... I mean, this is what I would tell you. I don't think that we're going to have any major issues with the agreement. I hope that we're not going to have any issues with the exhibits because I think that the detail that we're going to provide is going to be consistent with all the discussions that we've had to date. And quite frankly, if there is a concern over the detail, we want to get that taken care of on the front end, not the back end. The school district has not had a chance to comment on this yet. We just got it to them last week. We understand that we definitely need to have these exhibits done this week because we want to give them at least a week before their May 7 meeting. You know, they will have had this document for two weeks. And I think there... I would say this. You can review this document and provide comments on it without having the exhibits. That being said, the exhibits are something they're going to have to review too, so we definitely want to give them sufficient time to look at it. I don't anticipate major issues with this from the standpoint, again, it's the term language. Some of it was literally cut and paste from the term sheet and put in here. And then, other is our standard language in our residential subdivision agreement, which has been acceptable to a number of parties. So, I don't anticipate issues. But I think if you want to... I think those are kind of your options. Hey, maybe approve the agreement, but if you're not comfortable because you don't have a full agreement and the school board hasn't a chance to take a look at it, feedback tonight on it would be helpful because I think it would also let the school board know where you're at.
Thank you. I had one more thing before I turn it over. Is there anyone in the room who knows they cannot make the May 14 meeting? Okay, because that would affect things too if we couldn't get quorum. Alder Gaskell?
I was just looking at the calendar. Just a minute, please. I got to get back to my screen. In terms of the exhibits, really the only one that might be different in that we haven't seen it would be E, which is the actual summary of the fees then, because we might have a better idea about what those fees would be. Is that accurate?
Well, I think that... I would say this. I mean, Theron's going to comment in a second on the fees. I mean, the description of the improvements, we are going to have something that's more detailed than what was attached to the term sheet. So, to that extent, it would be something... I mean, we're really going to dive into the details on that. So, that would be something that would also be new.
Anything further? Oh, sorry. My apologies. Theron?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The fees regarding the utilities and the impact fees, so Madison Metz, City of Verona Water, City of Verona Sanitary Sewer, the school district has paid those already in full for north of the bike trail and south of the bike trail for the lands. The only fees that are going to come out of the Public Works Department in addition to those are the inspection fees. So, and those will be based on estimates that I'll do based on the duration of the project and the staff that's assigned to it. So, those will be basically a percentage and schedule-based. So, they're not going to be influenced by, you know, any unforeseen factors. So, it'll be a very basic, you know, backup sheet that'll be included. So, if you look at the Cathedral Point Phase 8 Development Agreement, the summary is within that one, and it says construction cost, inspection fees, geotech fees, contingency, and I think the roll-up summary, it'll be very similar to that minus the construction fees. Typically, we do that to get a letter of credit from a private developer. So, that's what that basis is for in the amount. I'll just be looking at the inspection fees here. Hopefully, if that answers your question or... Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out what we would see that's a little bit more detailed. But coming to think of it, the more detail you can put into this, the better, just so we don't end up with these communication issues again.
The... Under Exhibit D, that'll be exhibits the council and school district has all seen previously. And basically, what has been done, I'm just reviewing it, and then we're getting revised figures, is the word document is basically going to tell the story of the figures. So, it's... You got a pictural format and a narrative. So, that'll be pretty detailed.
Anything further? Alder Riki?
I was just wondering if the fact that they don't list a project manager is concerning.
So, that would be one of the issues that... That's something that they'll fill in, but they haven't had a chance to get that feedback to us. And that's not a credit... I mean, we gave it to them last week, so there's no way they would have had a chance to get that information to us yet.
Theron?
To answer your question, Heather, instruction management team in place. I've had meetings with them before. So, the team's in place that the school district has. So, it's basically just like Brian said. They just have to fill in the name.
Alder Touche?
As far as, you know, is there anything else they're waiting for us on? Does it seem like... Are we, like, being as supportive as we can to keep things moving for them?
Well, they are waiting on the exhibits from us. I think we... I mean, I've told their legal counsel. We told Mr. Gurrell during our meeting with the Urbach Trust. I mean, we understand their timeline. We're trying to get things to them as soon as possible. And that's one of the reasons why we, even though we didn't have the exhibits... I mean, in a perfect world, you always want to send a final document to somebody. But we thought, hey, we need to get this agreement to them even though we don't have the exhibits because, again, this is a document that they can start their review this week. We'll get the exhibits to them by the end of the week. But this at least allows them to kind of hit the ground running on the review of the agreement. We understand that, you know, their next meeting is on May 7, and we certainly want to have provided to them all of the information that they need and have the time to review everything so they can get comments back to us after that meeting.
Great, thank you. Alder Gaskell?
Jeff, have we ever received what we requested of the school district? I know that we wanted their timeline. I think it was requested a couple months ago.
Yes, they did answer the requested... The questions that we asked them. But it wasn't in a form that I think afforded it on to everyone, but they did provide the answers to our answers, or the answers to our questions.
Any other questions or comments? Does anyone feel like taking action tonight, or should we just wait till the 14th? Alder Touche?
Unless I see some shaking heads, I'm willing to make a motion to recommending approving the agreement.
Can I give you a suggestion?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I would say then, motion to approve the development agreement between the city and the Verona Area School District, subject to review and approval by, let's say, the city administrator and the city attorney. And let me comment, this next, I would say, is not part of the motion, but I would say I'd put it on the record. I think what we're looking back at then is, you know, we're obviously going to have to complete the exhibits, share them with the school district. We will get feedback. To the extent that we have feedback and changes to the agreement that are minor or non-substantive, then that would suggest that we don't need to bring it back to you. If there are changes that we believe are significant, and quite frankly, we're going to err on the side of bringing it back to you. But if there are changes that we believe need to come back, then it would come back on the 14th. But at least if you make this motion, the school board effectively knows, hey, what the city has right now, or the common council has right now, they're comfortable with, and they have a comfort with how the exhibits have been explained by city staff.
I'm willing to make that motion and then not try to repeat it. If Ellen at least has it written down correctly, I'm good to go.
Great. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kim. Alder Doyle?
Just like to make a comment. I'm not personally comfortable with approving anything but a finalized agreement, but we'll defer to the rest of the body.
Alder Gaskell?
I would also like to see non-substantive changes, just so that we're in the loop. Even if you don't feel like it needs to come back to us, I'd still like to know what their requested changes are. So, if we can just be kept in the loop on that, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Alder Riki?
I would also be comfortable voting yes on this motion if what Alder Gaskell said happens.
Why don't you just come back next week, or next meeting, so?
Well, we can... I mean, we can certainly do that. I mean, because what I'm hearing so far is, yeah, we have a comfort level with what's before us. We have a comfort level with the exhibits as they've been described. I'm also hearing some people say, hey, we definitely need to be kept in the loop. Maybe we'd rather have the final agreement back before us. So, it's kind of up to you guys how you want to approach it. I think you have, you know...
I want to...
Either way to approach it is a reasonable way.
I think it's important for us to send a clear message, like, we're on board. School district, please do what you need to do to wrap this up. And unless you're asking for something out of bounds, we're good to go. So, I want to stick with the motion.
Anyone else have questions or comments? I just want to say I'm comfortable as well because if they come back, if they have an issue with something, if they come back with something substantive, if there's some last-minute change they really need, they can bring it back to us and we can deal with it then, yeah. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes six to one with Alder Doyle voting no. All right, on to new business, item 12B, which is discussion and possible action regarding a process for filling the city council vacancy. Jeff, did you have something?
I just wanted to... I provided two scenarios for council's direction to determine how you would want to move forward with filling the vacancy. In these two scenarios, first one, we'd announce it, or both of them, we'd announce the position tomorrow with a deadline of May 7, end of business, May 7. The difference in those is whether council wants to have either special meetings, set up a committee to review the interviews or have interviews with the candidates and review the information that comes in. If you'd want to do that during the week of May 7, we could move the appointment possibly on May 14. If council wants to have the interviews with full council at the May 14 meeting, then you could appoint the candidates at the May 29 meeting. So, I kind of just put these out there for your review and so that you could provide us with some direction on how you want to move forward with the appointment process.
Great. If I could say something first, I really don't want to have a committee. I think in the past, it can be hard to get people together, and it can be hard to tell who should be on the committee. And I think ultimately, if people in the council are the ones who are voting to appoint it, we should... If there's an interview, if people speak before the council and want to get appointed, when people vote, they should have similar information at least. And I think two weeks, I think from if we announce it now to the 7th is, I think that's enough time. I wouldn't want to do it too fast where anyone got missed. But anyways, any other questions? Alder Gaskell?
I respectfully disagree with that. I feel like a committee allows people who wouldn't normally feel comfortable right off the bat being interviewed by all of us standing up here in this room. I feel like a committee allows people who wouldn't normally feel comfortable right off the bat being interviewed by all of us standing up here in this room. And it's worked before. I think I just want to eliminate barriers, perceived or not, to people stepping up to run and fill the appointment. And I think this, this can be a pretty intimidating interview process. And if people know they have to do it right off the bat, they may not even try.
Alder Touche?
I haven't formed my opinion yet, so it's, I think, uh...
Alder Doyle?
I'm wondering, to maybe overcome that barrier, if we could have, you know, and this is, I guess this is too much of a turnaround to do by tomorrow, but I, I feel like we've had kind of a set, set of questions that we've asked folks in the past. Can we just distribute that tomorrow, have people handwrite their responses, and then just have them here for questions to elaborate on a committee or our regular council meeting on the 14th? So that way, they're written responses. And so for folks who don't feel comfortable interviewing on camera before the entire council, they have their responses in the record, and then can maybe just answer a few questions. So that way, we don't have to have a committee, people have their responses in the record, but can elaborate if needed.
Alder Gaskill?
So how does this work then at the council level? Do we, you know, if we have four people here, we vote on yea or nay on each candidate?
My impress- well, I guess there's a lot of different ways we could do it. In the past, we've had votes on individual candidates, and, and other times there's been motions. Alder Doyle?
That's what I was going to say, sometimes we do it similar to how we did the appointment to the, the council position on the plan commission. You nominate someone, there's a vote.
Alder Touche?
I, I just, if, whatever we do, I'd love to hear from the candidates or if people are interested. I don't know if I'd be prepared to vote right away. You know, I, I mean, I'm just one of these people that likes to think about things and form a decision versus on the spot, because I just feel that I'll end up just making a gut decision unless there's something alarming one way or the other. I just, you know, if I'm, if they're interviewing, I just would hate to not have time to consider all, all options.
I suppose that is pretty standard for job applications as well. Any other questions or comments? Alder Kemp?
I agree with, with what Evan said, we do want to make sure we have a certain amount of time to consider. But I also know we want to make sure, in case there's any quorum issues, that we move the process along also. So we have to consider that as well.
Would it make sense to potentially have interviews or, or people fill out questionnaires and discuss them on the 14th, and then make a final decision for the, the second meeting in May?
I like that idea. I think if people can give us something written, and if they want to show up to speak, they can. And then, you know, as a committee, we can discuss, and then the next meeting after we can vote would be, is an idea.
Alder Doyle?
I guess just to point out, all the written materials, we'll have a week to, to review those. I still understand if people don't have comfort, uh, feel comfortable with making, or taking action on the 14th, but there will still be a week to review materials.
Alder Kemp?
Yes, if someone submits written answers but then doesn't show up, are we talking then about voting for someone that we haven't seen yet or talked to, or would there still be an opportunity? That's where I'm a little confused on what you just stated, Evan.
I, I'm trying to address the fear of being in front of the camera that some people may have. You know, here's the reality, we're all in front of the camera now. If you're afraid of doing it, then, it, then maybe they're not the right candidate. You know, I, I do believe that, you know, we went without Alder McGilvery for quite a while, or without Chad, however you want to think about it. And I know we can survive as a committee. I, I also think that unless people are already thinking about it and they want to raise their hand and, and possibly fill that seat, you know, it does take a lot of thought, and it's a commitment. And it's certainly, as we, as, as we know, and, and our new elders are figuring out, that it's, it, it's a real, serious commitment. And so I think it's appropriate to give people time to, like, I really want to do this, because they may not feel energized until they see the empty chair and realize that there's, there's an opportunity. So I'm not a big fan of rushing this necessarily. I, I'm, as much, as much as it's convenient having someone there and knowing if one or two of us are gone, you can still have a meeting. But I just, I, I just want to be as fair to people as possible.
Alder Doyle? Alder Gaskill?
To Alder Kemp's point, we should not automatically eliminate someone because they're unable to make an arbitrary, that we're deciding right now, May 7th date. So if we give people a full month to the 29th, I think that's a little bit more reasonable.
I think that...
It's a steep learning curve to be up here. I mean, it is scary. And so we shouldn't just automatically assume if you can't handle being on camera, you shouldn't even try. That's just, that's not representative.
Okay, I'm going to try to summarize. So we, we would send out a questionnaire and get answers by a certain date?
Last, last meeting in May.
Okay, so it would have to be in, so it would have to be in time to make the packet for the, the 29th meeting, which would be... Is it, is Friday at noon, is that too late for your staff? Yes, okay.
Thursday noon?
Thurs- Thursday noon, so that would be the, the 24th? Would that be, would that give you guys enough time to sort it out?
And then, and then vote the first meeting in June?
Does that work?
Do you just want to vote, or do you want to then have interviews? If we're, if we're having the deadlines by the 29th, how, do you want to do interviews?
I'm, I'm thinking, you know, if, although May or April's coming to an end very quickly, 23rd, you know, I'm thinking if people are going to be putting in for, for the empty seat, they've got two, over two weeks right now to, to get in, you know, to get why. They would actually have four weeks, really. And then we could meet with, we could have people come up and, and sell themselves at the next two meetings in May. And then in June, we could vote.
So then we would do, we would send an invite out to the candidates, basically saying, you're on the agenda. If you want to talk for two minutes, you don't have to talk, although it might be good to show up if people had questions. And then we would make a final decision at the first meeting in June? Does that work for people?
Or do you want the last meeting in June and just kind of add that extra meeting?
I would probably keep it...
Too far.
Yeah.
The first, okay.
I like that we would not be voting on a person we're seeing for the first time. That's really uncomfortable on both sides of the table.
Yep. Yeah, that's fair. Okay, do we, do we have, oh, sorry.
So deadline for getting the city in interest on submitting for the position by the 24th of May.
At noon?
They would be in the packet for the 29th, yes.
At noon, okay, because that's important, too.
They'd be in the packet for the, the 29th of May.
28th of May.
Oh, yeah, 28th.
I'm sorry, 28th of May, that's correct.
Oh, so it would be the 29th, okay.
29th, good job.
So on the 29th, you'd, we would ask for candidates if they're interested in presenting to council.
Like a two to three minute speech.
And then the first, first meeting in June, make a, make a decision on the candidates?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would say people could speak on May 14th if they wanted, if the, if the 29th wasn't convenient for them.
I mean, there, yeah, there'll be a public comment, and I would not want to, like, bar somebody, being like, no, you specifically can't speak.
Well, no, I mean, but yeah, then they could get their, their, their answers in before the 14th, and if we can fit them in, that'd be great.
Great. Do we have consent on, on that? Looks like we do. Okay. Item 12C, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of operating licenses.
Thank you, I have operator license applications for Courtney McCaw for Fisher King Winery, Teresa Keggy. These are temporary licenses for Cinco de Mayo and Hometown Days, and Dana Amen for the Draft House.
Thank you. Motions?
Move approval?
Approval by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskill? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that passes. All right, we are now back to old business, A, which is discussion and possible action regarding litigation involving parcel 16 of Transportation Project Plan Number 59920981. And I will turn this over to Alder Touche.
I'm going to ask, what can we talk publicly before I make a motion to move into closed session? Much, little? Or being sued?
You come on, you can do better than that.
A- a- as I think many people know, we're involved in a major road construction project at the intersection of county highways M and PD. As a result of that road construction project, we had to approach a number of different property owners for acquisition of land. For the most part, we will, we were able to reach negotiated settlement with a number of the property owners. There is one property owner that we did not reach negotiated settlement, so we followed through with the statutory condemnation process. A- as a result of us following through with the cond- statutory condemnation process, last, I'm going to want to say September, although I don't, it was last year, the, a lawsuit was filed against the city of Verona. This lawsuit alleges that the city did not have a right to acquire the property for the construction project. I came before you after the lawsuit was filed and told you, I mean, my opinion is vehemently disagree with the allegations made in the lawsuit. I think there's no question that we have the right to condemn land for a public improvement project of this nature. Since that time, we have filed an answer in, in Dane County Circuit Court where we denied the allegations in the, in the lawsuit. There has been some processes that have gone forth regarding the litigation. And now we, something has occurred that results in me needing to come before you to discuss strategy related to the litigation.
Thank you for that explanation, Alder Touche?
Can, can you add just, and maybe this is for Mr. Jacobson, there was a timing issue on acquiring this land for the project, on why we need to acquire the lands by a certain time? Just, I just want to complete the whole context for this.
Darren?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this project is being led by DOT, and there's federal funds involved, too. So there was seventeen and a half million dollars in federal funds tied to the county highway M reconstruction project. We needed to have all the land acquired and recorded by a certain date, and that falls in the, towards the end of June of 17. Basically, the DOT certifies all the land acquisition that was done by the local parties, which is led by City of Verona and City of Madison. And typically, DOT's process is that all land is acquired prior to the project even be, being noticed, being advertised in the paper. This one, they stretched it out to right before the bid opening. So basically, all land had to be acquired by then, which the bid opening was in early July, I believe. So that's DOT's process, because if all the land isn't acquired through whichever means, if it's negotiated or condemned, basically, they won't award the project. So if we did not get all the land acquired by said date, and the project wasn't awarded, the federal funds were at risk to be pulled.
So it sounds like you're saying we had to condemn it essentially to move on, so...
Correct.
Just especially for the, the new council members, just so you have a little context on what got us to this point.
Correct. We acquired 19 properties as part of that project, so, just to...
It was a small effort.
No, everything's been acquired as of, you know, late June of 17. So I mean, we've been building the project since October of last fall, so we're, the project is full steam ahead. DOT has certified all the right-of-way acquisitions. Basically, what that means is that they, they've documented that we have followed their process. Otherwise, they wouldn't certify it either.
Okay, but, but to that specific question, and, and you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that we did have to take the condemnation step with some other property owners. And so the, the period of time for those property owners to challenge our right to condemn has passed. But, you know, generally speaking, whenever you have a construction project of this nature, there's two different lawsuits that can be filed by a property owner. One challenging your right to condemn the property, and then the second to challenge the amount of compensation that was provided. And so for those properties where we did not reach a negotiated settlement, and we actually had to condemn, and I don't think there's a lot, but there's more than just that, this one, that statute of limitations has not run. So in theory, there, there's, there's, there could be others that would, would come forward. But it's very, it's, it's limited, because I think the vast majority of them, we did reach a negotiated settlement.
Darren?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. For the county highway M project, there was two properties we had unfortunately condemned. One of the two is the motion tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments that people would like to make or say in open session? Okay, Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the motion written for others. All right. I'm making a motion to move into closed session for, to discuss litigation involving parcel 16 of Transportation Project Plan Number 5992-09-81. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren. G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is involved. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp, and this recall, this requires a roll call vote.
Alder Cronin?
What is my response option?
Yes, we know to go into...
Yes.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Gaskill?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Riki?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And we are in closed session. How do I tell if we're back on the air? Okay, we are back in open session. I don't think we have anything else to add, although then, then we are continuing with the process. Last up is adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
I am not sure who was first. I'm gonna say Alder Reiki. Is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. All those in favor say aye? Opposed, no? We are adjourned.